Before four o'clock, but it's unusually quiet, so we might as well get started. Everyone's ready. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Felkowski.
Present.
Epic.
Here.
McNamee. Nunley.
Here.
Pejmo.
Here.
Sheets. Stanger.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Here.
Thank you everyone for being here. Trustee McNamee did advise she is unable to make the meeting today. And if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Washington's liberation and without end of its well.
And Mr. Zibble, would you please read the mission statement?
Certainly. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. And at this time, are there any public comments in the room today? Yes, please.
Is there a time limit? I just want to make sure I stay within the rules.
Sure, if you could just please state your name and address for the record and then two to five minutes, is that appropriate?
I'll speak quickly, yes. My name is Brian Massey, eighty-one ninety-six Rainbow Drive Concord Township. I'm here, I'm a director of Lobbyists for Citizens. We're a five oh one C four organization and we write an online newspaper and we talk about things in Lake County. I first would like to thank Mr. Capel. I think it's important that the board know that anytime that I have asked for information from Mr. Capel, he has been extremely prompt, extremely accurate and transparent. I publicly thank you for that. That does not happen all the time. I did receive the the budget and I took a look at it and I saw that sales tax is about seventy-eight percent. And I did notice that we've got some some minor problems on page number five of your the percentages or some inconsistencies there. I really didn't want to talk about that, but the other thing that I was looking at is your cash balances. Forty-one million dollars at the end of this year and by twenty twenty-seven, we're projected to have fifty-seven million dollars. And the reason that that concerns me is that I have been looking at what is happening in Lake County, whether it's Lake Tran, Lake Metro Parks, Lakeland Community College, all of the political subdivisions. We're growing by leaps and bounds. And I'm concerned that we are overburdening the taxpayers. When I take a look at the prop ever increasing property taxes, we're going to price seniors and those living on fixed incomes out of their homes. There's no question about that. With the double-digit inflation, we're seeing seventy-five-year-old females having to go back to work just to pay for their costs. The concern that I have with Lake Tran, I'd like you to consider this. Back in twenty nineteen, you asked for, I think it was a quarter of a percent sales tax and it was passed. And you said that officials have said that the issue would allow Lake Tran to meet the growing demand for accessible transportation for Lake County seniors, people with disabilities and veterans. It also would improve the access for important manufacturing corridors like Tyler Boulevard and Heiser Road. So the taxpayers asked it based on what you said. Well, communication I've had with Mr. Capel, you've changed the deal to the taxpayers. If I can find the I asked Mr. Capel, again, this is not a slam on Mr. Capel, I'm just asking the questions. Has there been a change in any policies that would lessen the services provided to seniors? The short answer, he said, and I quote, "The short answer, we did make a change." Eliminated the essential service to now more of a first-come, first-served basis, which has lessened the services to the the people in Lake County that passed the sales tax levy in twenty nineteen. So I submit to the board, I'd like you to consider the people that you're serving. If we if we continue to we now have a the need for a three-hundred-million-dollar public safety center, used to be called a jail. I've been looking at that and I'm saying, can we can, and they want to raise the sales tax half percent to pay for it. Can we continue to grow this government? All of the services, people can can no longer afford it. I'm asking you to consider reducing or giving back that quarter of a percent because you've changed the deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments in the room today? Seeing none. At this time, is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pejmo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zible. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Epstein.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pejmo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. Excuse me. We have approved the meeting minutes. And we do have a guest that will be joining us for executive session, so we are moving it up on the meeting agenda to accommodate them. At this time, is there a motion to enter into executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to section one-twenty-one point twenty-two G four of the Ohio Revised Code? Motion made by Ms. Pejmo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll again.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pejmo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The board is going to enter executive session at four oh six PM. We are going to invite our CEO, our legal counsel, and another representative from our legal counsel's firm to join us. Thank you.
For those on YouTube, we will be back.
We are back from executive session and I will turn the meeting over to Lisa.
Okay. Okay, so our normal, this will be for our October two thousand and twenty-two operating budget. It's, there's nothing again out of the ordinary. So far to date, we have about thirty million dollars in revenue. And we have about sixteen-point-five million that we've spent in expenses. And our estimated capital expenses so far year-to-date, just for our local portions, at about one-point-six million, leaving us a twelve-million-dollar income for this year. And then, of course, our estimated depreciation. If we could go on to the next slide. So I kind of combine slides from what I've normally done. I normally had the percentages on that first first page and I thought I would combine it with the actual numbers, so it put a little more depth in the picture. And the reason I also wanted to put this together was just to show again on that federal and state is a large item on the revenue piece. If you look at it from a budget to an actual in twenty-two or an actual in twenty-one. And again, that was because of those one-time grants. So now that we have used all those up based on our operating expenses through the end of October, I mean, through the end of August is when we finally use those up. Those will not be showing up for next year. So when we look at the budget, I did a percentage also, just to give you a little comparison, which I would say twenty-three is back to normal when it comes to those percentages. So on our expenses for the month of October, that middle column just kind of defines our fair revenue and our miscellaneous expenses with our sales tax and then our federal and state for the revenue for the thirty-million-three-hundred-and-two-thousand. And then on the wages and benefits, we're at about twelve million. And we're kind of right in the middle of where we budgeted versus what we actually did in twenty-one. I will say in twenty-one, we still saw some of the pandemic. And even in twenty-two, we've seen a little bit of it, but twenty-three, like I said, will be, we're hoping to be back to normal. And another kind of an indicator is the purchase transportation, but I have it lumped with miscellaneous, but that's a little bit less still than what we budgeted and we're still feeling the effects of that purchase transportation from the pandemic. So those all make up our total expenses for the sixty-million-four-eighty-one. But if you look, your wages and benefits as a percentage, because we're a service industry, we're going to be right around that seventy percent mark, seventy to seventy-five percent of our, most of our expenses are going to be wages and benefits. If we could go on to the next slide. This right here is our capital plan. So obviously, capital projects are longer than a year. Sometimes they take two or three years before they completely go away and kind of dissolve. So when we put the prior two thousand and twenty-two, those are just commitments that we already make that we still owe some funds out there. You know, the projects are finishing up. So it kind of just gives a federal, local, and state share. I will say that that local share there is what it was originally. If you actually physically look at that sheet, I think it's almost half of that is what we actually, oh, we've paid some of that so far, so for the prior two thousand and twenty-two. And it kind of just gives you an idea. Most of the out years, those capital projects are mainly your buses and stuff, because every year we do purchase buses on that, on a, you know, we have like a which Keith and Andrea can speak to that more, but you buy so many certain buses, because every six years, maybe for Dial-A-Ride or seven years, and then your larger buses, which we've purchased in the last few years, so those should be further out. And those aren't showing up on here. These are mainly dialer ones. So, and then as a percentage, just to kind of show you your federal portion out of all of these through the years, two thousand and twenty-six, seventy percent is federal money that you'll get for that. Our local commitments about twenty-eight-point-nine percent and like point-four percent is state. And I will say that I just kind of combined, so in that two thousand and twenty-three, it's obvious that that's high and the reason being is because of that headquarters piece, so. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the next slide for STS. Okay, I'm kind of, STS is our total revenue is this year currently, it's at seventy-two thousand. Our operating expense is about a hundred and fifty. And this one really shows the effects of that pandemic, because you can see in twenty-one, we were still really low. Two thousand and twenty-two, we've really gained some ground based on our budget. And this was a budget, the same budget I've used, the two-hundred-and-thousand even before the pandemic, because we initially started STS right before the pandemic, so we really never truly had a full year's worth of revenues and expenses, so I would say this year would probably be one of the best years for STS to give a picture. And next year will probably even be a little bit better. A lot of contracts this year we obligated to with all the senior centers and that for this STS, so. I can go to the second slide, kind of the same thing, just mainly your main source of revenue, obviously, and the STS is going to be your fares. And then it kind of just breaks out your wages and benefits. In this instance, is about fifty-eight-point-four percent. Obviously, that would go up as you, you, as you have more contracts and services that you provide, because some of your stuff is fixed. And you can kind of see that over on twenty-one, because we didn't really have a lot of fares. Some of the fixed costs is just your insurance and the rental of the building. There's, there's nothing out of the ordinary again for this for the month of October. And this right here is our cash balance. So our operating that we keep our balance is about seven-point-nine million dollars. And capital for our obligations for two thousand and twenty-two and prior, is it about two-point-eight million? The other cash is thirty-five-point-six million and our STS cash is five-four, five-hundred-and-forty-five thousand for a grand total of about forty, almost forty-seven million dollars. But it kind of breaks it out for you, so you can see. And then I don't really have anything else to add. I just have any question, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for the month of October, two thousand and twenty-two operating or STS.
Any October questions for Lisa? Is there a motion to approve Lake Tran's October twenty-twenty-two operating and STS financial statements and capital plan review subject to audit?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Stanger, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Epic. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pejmo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Stanger.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And we are going to continue with Lisa to discuss the budget for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so just in summary, because I went over this last month, but happy to answer any questions. We're estimating revenue for next year for two thousand and twenty-three to be around thirty-million-one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars. And when we get into the detail, you'll see it does include some state and federal, but it will be back to normal, what our normal federal and state revenue that we've normally gotten on a regular basis each year. Our expenses are at twenty-four-million-one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars with any anticipation of our operating income ending at around six million dollars for next year. And then on the capital side, that's what our capital budget is. This does not include the, obviously, for the headquarters or anything like that, that will be added in separately as you guys go through the, through that for this year or next year. And that, so like this portion right here is just our normal, regular maintenance or buses and purchases for next year that we're anticipating, which is a total of two-million-three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. If we go to the next slide. So on this one, I kind of broke it out and I think, so if you look at the budget for twenty-three for the revenues, for your fares and miscellaneous, your sales tax and your federal and state, this is a more realistic picture. Pre-pandemic and now after the pandemic, back to normal. So you can see that your sales tax is the majority of your revenue source to run Lake Tran operations. It's just happened to be that we were able to get the extra funding for our federal fifty-three-oh-seven funds to help us. And your federal and state is normally going to be right around that ten, twelve, fourteen percent. So, and that's how we come up with the thirty-million-one-forty-four, which is slightly less than prior years. Our wages and benefits, we're going to be right at about seventeen-million-two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand. Again, I did highlight in here that is adding some new positions to address the issue for Dial-A-Ride. And so that is included in this budget and hopefully being at full staff to be able to eliminate some of the issues that we've had this year. So that is included in here. And then obviously, the rest of it's just our, is just our normal. There's nothing really that stands out. The biggest thing would be the wages and benefits of adding those new positions, which was approved by the board in September of two thousand and twenty-two on the organizational chart. And then if we, if everybody's good, if we can go to the next chart. So on the capital plan, we're estimating the two-million-three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-ninety-six. Again, that's our federal and our local share. It does not include the headquarters project. And we do update that capital plan each month with, when, in the package, as I presented to the board, which is prepared by Andrea. And our actual purchases and contractual agreements that are over twenty-five thousand will be brought before the board, even though you're approving this. If something in total is over twenty-five thousand, even though you're approving this, it will still be brought before the board. And we have to do that in accordance to the FTA circular. And then Lake Tran will pursue any grant opportunities for which it is eligible that will benefit Lake Tran. And then the next slide. So we are asking the board tonight if they would approve our operating budget for twenty-four-million-one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and our capital plan of two-million-three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any questions for Lisa about the budget at this time? Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two-five authorizing the Lake Tran operating budget not to exceed twenty-four-million-one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and a proposed capital plan, two-million-three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for calendar year twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pejmo? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Swanson. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pejmo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, and I will turn the meeting back over to Lisa for the STS budget.
So STS, we're estimating two-hundred-thousand. This is the largest budget we've ever estimated. Last year was the same. We did bring it down during the pandemic and when we initially started, it was at two-hundred-thousand. Obviously, if the expenses or the should go up higher than that for this year, then we will bring it back to the board and update it and then give an update as to why. And hopefully, hopefully, we will be able to, but I think we should be pretty good for the year. We're seeing, like I said, more contracts and I did list that in the detail here, if we could go on to the second page. And it's really just mainly, again, it's going to be wages and benefits, even if the service were to grow. The wages and benefits piece is probably going to be the piece in the expense that you're going to see grow, because the other pieces are just fixed costs that whether we operate the service or we don't, that we're committed to. And then in summary, on the next page is we are asking the board if they would approve our special transportation service, our STS service for two-hundred-thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two-six authorizing the Lake Tran Special Transportation Services operating budget for calendar year twenty twenty-three in the amount of two-hundred-thousand dollars?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Stanger, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Nunley. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pejmo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. It looks like at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Keith to discuss a floor sweeper.
Still in go. There we go. For authorization to enter in a contract with Cartridge North America to purchase or replacement floor scrubber at a cost not to exceed eighty-four-thousand and forty-five dollars. Thanks. So this is our normal slide for how we make determinations on how to go out for bids. We went for a proposal because we didn't know all the specifications and we wanted some back and forth with potential vendors. We were looking at more corrosion resistance than our last floor machine, hopefully get a longer useful life out of it, and alternative fuels, your hybrid electric or propane. Next one. This is another copy of a slide to show the process of how we make our decision on which way to go. Okay. So our floor machines, they they clean roughly a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand square feet of parking area. You know, everything that comes off the bus or leaks out of a bus, oil dry, salt, calcium chloride, oils, coolings. We run these things quite a bit, especially in the winter with all the the snow melt. They were purchased in two thousand and six. They were said to have a ten-year useful life. I'll call it one, we have two, we have two of them in our fleet. I'll call one of them Machine A. We had a circuit panel go bad on it. We tried to repair it. We worked with a telecom to see if they could, someone with more electrical knowledge could repair it for us. It's no longer available. Then when Machine B, the undercarriage, the whole bottom part of it rotted out. There's brushes underneath, squeegees, a vacuum assembly. Then we were told by our dealer, which was Jordan Power Supply, that none of our parts are available. They're obsolete. Out of the two machines, we made one operable machine, so we're down to one machine right now. Next slide, please. So we went out for our proposal. We sent out to fifteen vendors. Only two vendors replied to us. Cartridge North America offered a stainless steel frame and assembly underneath the machine. Global equipment in their proposal, it was only components like a brush holder, a water storage cabinet, because they store water onboard. So myself, our, our fleet guy and our facilities guy raided their proposals and we came up with Cartridge North America, which Cartridge is a manufacturer, the machine we're buying. So this is, and they're out of Germany. This is like their American headquarters that were bid it, bidding against global equipment, which I read it as, well, it's the exact same machine. So I think they bid against one of their dealers, which was odd for us in the first time, and they beat them by almost twenty thousand dollars. I think the next closest one was ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars for the machine. So next slide. So I'm asking for approval of the resolution author, authorizing the CEO or his designee to enter into and execute a contract with Cartridge North America to purchase a floor sweeper scrubber at a cost not to exceed eighty-four-thousand-and-forty-five dollars. Can I answer any questions?
Kind of warranties are we getting and how long is this useful life of this one?
Warranty was in the bid there. Main, main components, I believe, was three years. Subcomponents and where subcomponents were a year and labor was a year. I'm pretty sure that's accurate. If it's not, I will let you know.
Estimated useful life, we have ten plus, right?
They're saying ten plus. I estimate this one at fifteen to eighteen. There's more stainless steel on the bottom end of the vehicle.
You talk, did you mention on this one what the what's using, used to run it? Is it, are you thinking?
Oh, sorry. This one's propane. That was interesting to us. We have naturally having propane on a property. There's an adapter that we'd be able to fill tow motor tanks and this machine right off of our tank. But a year ago was like thirty-five, thirty-seven-hundred dollars. And we're not a loading dock, so there was no value on buying it at that time. It was cheaper for us to go to air gas and get propane. With this machine, we will buy that and be able to fill both pieces of equipment here.
Any other questions for Keith? Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two-seven authorizing the CEO or his designee to enter into a contract with Cartridge North America Incorporated to purchase a floor sweeper scrubber at a cost not to exceed eighty-four-thousand, eighty-four-thousand-four-five dollars?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Nunley, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pejmo. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pejmo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Keith, enjoy your new floor sweeper scrubber. It's one of the more glamorous procurements we've had recently.
I could see him waving his arm on it like.
Ben, board calendar?
This one should be pretty quick and easy. This is, the board every year has to approve its calendar for the next year, so these are the meeting dates. Trudy will send out calendar invites like she did in the past. You'll get vendor reminders like you did in the past. If any would like any additional notification in any way, we will be happy to accommodate that. One change from last year to this year that we made that we think is is appropriate is previously, our break was in August. We changed it to July this year to align better with with kids and schools and and more typical vacation schedules. Most people seem to be taking vacations more in that July range than in August nowadays, so we thought that it would be better for the board to take that as their break versus August. Obviously, we could change that if if the board doesn't like that, because it's it's your meeting. I would also note that the January meeting, the first Monday in January is a holiday, so we bumped it back a week, so it's slightly later than before, so we have a little bit longer between now and our meeting in January. Other than that, you know, we did our best to shift things around based on the holidays and where they're at, so. Uh, yeah. Um, other than that, you know, we did our best to shift things around based on the holidays and where they're at, so, uh, yeah. That's it.
Is there a motion to approve the board meeting calendar for twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Pishmo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Swanson. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, and Ben, I'll turn it over to you for the six-month look ahead and the C E O report.
Alrighty, um, six-month look ahead. There are not a lot of changes in here from last month, but I'll go through them quickly. Um, in January, we expect to have the Title VI plan before you. Um, for those of you that haven't been through this before, this is a plan the F T A requires us to have and update every three years um, to ensure we are providing our services in an equitable fashion. Um, it looks at things like environmental justice areas, poverty, zero car households, some other stuff. Um, we have on the schedule the uh construction project, uh, in alignment with the schedule the board has seen uh before. We will bring the lowest and best bidder to the board uh for a contractor award. Um, the Menor High School bus stop, we uh had a pre-proposal meeting for that um, last week, and we had three bidders attend, so we look forward to bringing that to the board also in January. Um, I should mention for the H Q project, we did have the um pre-proposal meeting uh or pre-bid meeting last week. There are about thirty-seven people in attendance, um, some from unions, some from uh uh companies, you know, just to ask kind of questions more about the procurement process than anything, you know, how do you felt this form uh kind of stuff like that? Um, in February, we expect to have the union contracts. Oh, my TV hopefully comes back here. Um, our union contracts, uh, not union contracts, um, uniform contracts on the agenda. My TV's broken over there, sorry. Um, I I think I mentioned before that they asked for forty-five percent price increase. We said, no, thank you. Uh, it's out to bid right now. We're evaluating uh uniforms to uh do a new contract. Um, a vehicle lift, this this has been moved back uh twice now. Um, originally, we were going to buy a cut a lift off the state contract. Um, our research took us a little longer than we expected, so instead of asking for approval in January, we moved it back to February. Um, but the procurement is underway right now. I know Keith had some lift vendors out here demonstrating a product the other day, so uh, we feel pretty comfortable to have something to you in February. Um, just a reminder, that is a result of the lift that failed in maintenance, so it's not just a lift for a a kind of a new and fun lift. It is um, just a result of a lift that's thirty years old that that is, has reached the end of its uh time with us. Um, in March, we'll being state grant authority, this is the routine action item where we request authority to uh apply for grants from the state. Um, in April, we will bring our public transit agency safety plan or P task. Um, again, this is a safety plan that the feds require that we update every year. Um, it does have a new component this year. I forget specifically what it was about, but I know our trainers are working on it already, so there's some slight changes, but you know, this has our safety targets and kind of metrics for the board to review. Um, as of right now, we don't have anything for May. I'm sure that will fill up as we get closer. And then uh in June, we have a federal grant authority, which is again the authority we need every year to apply for grants with the federal government. Does anybody have any questions about any of those things? Very exciting. I will roll on into my C E O report if that is okay. Um, uh, just going over the H Q uh project schedule, so we are on schedule in almost the last step where we are in the procurement process. Um, like I mentioned, we had a uh a pre-bid meeting on December fourteenth. We had thirty-seven people there. Um, those are pretty technical meetings. I don't know if the board usually doesn't come to those. We, they're they're just uh you know, how do you fill out this form kind of conversations? Um, there is a bid opening on January uh eleventh. Andre, refresh my memory on the time.
Two o'clock.
Okay.
In this room.
So it is a public bid opening, so I imagine there'll be some folks from the contractors in attendance to see what the apparent low bid is. Um, after that, uh, C T consultants and Bowen will go through a process of, you know, making sure the contractor is uh the appropriate uh able to do the work contractor. Um, Jaga Transit Study, we are working along on this. Uh, Brandon is plugging away at the agreement between us and Jaga. Um, you know, again, our schedule is to have that agreement voted on in February, so we've got uh about two months left before we need to have sort of a decision made by everybody. Um, but just as you look at the calendar kind of moving out, you know, I have phase one is sort of the governance section where we make sure we're okay with the the arrangement, the governing uh contract and all those things. And then phase two is where we have the behind-the-scenes prep, where me and my team and Jaga teams really spend a lot of time together, talking about details and uh, things moving forward, assuming that uh phase one is approved, and then phase three would be uh takeover in July. Um, I have had some conversations with ODOT about the budget we submitted. They have indicated that they don't see any major issues with it yet, but have not sort of issued a formal approval. Um, but all things, I think, are moving forward in a satisfactory way at this point. Um, once we have a draft M O U that both us and Jaga have kind of uh gone over technically, I would love to have conversations with board members individually to talk about that. I want to make sure everyone feels comfortable with this um, and 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 if they want to move forward. Um, I T strategic plan, we had the kickoff meeting with the vendor, and they will be onsite in early January to conduct staff interviews and do their initial site visit. Um, extended service in twenty-three. So one of the things I I we talked about uh in September was about extending service in twenty-three. Uh, we had initially planned on starting it, it, you know, mid-first quarter. Um, because of the challenges we had with Dial-A-Ride, we are going to delay that a little bit. We are want to monitor Dial-A-Ride, make sure service quality is in a good position before we consider expanding services. So I think that'll push us back a couple months, um, probably into the second quarter of twenty-three. We don't have an official date yet. We really want to make sure that Dial-A-Ride is in a good place before we consider adding to it. Um, we have a a driver class that is uh scheduled to be hired at January fourth and start training on January eleventh. Twenty-third, I was off like a week or so. Um, assuming we get a good group of candidates in that class, and we feel like they're meeting our our training goals and guidelines, we feel like we'll probably have the right number of people to then make a decision about the date for um, extended service in twenty twenty-three. Um, lastly, this is the grant tracker. Andre and I had some discussions about this. There hasn't been a lot of significant updates to this. Um, NOACA did officially award us the second-to-last line uh vehicle money. So we were talking about the best way to sort of quote, reset this for the next grant cycle, so my intention was basically to sort of wash this clean um at the end of the year and then restart it again beginning in January. But I also want to make sure that that is consistent with the board's desire about seeing the grants. So if you have any thoughts about that, about, hey, you know, I think that's a good time. You haven't given us enough information or any comments at all about how we can better, you know, get you grant information. Um, you know, shoot me an email, call, text, and we could kind of talk about it, but um this is uh, I think, has has worked pretty well for giving the board grant info. So that is.
I think since everything was awarded on there, it's probably okay to start from in January.
Yeah, the the cycle usually starts, ODOT usually starts first in the beginning of the year, and then the feds come a little bit later, and there is definitely a grant season where there's a couple months where Andrea is the most hot and heavy, but um it does sort of taper off a little bit throughout the year, so. That is it for me, unless anyone has any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Sorry. Going back to the extended extended service, is there any thought of tailoring that for a longer period of time or not doing it altogether, or it's just a matter of when?
I think it's a matter of when. Um, I think that, you know, service is in a in a much better place now than it was in October. We want to watch those ridership trends and our hiring to make sure they continue to be in the right place. I I feel comfortable that by you know, the end of February, we will, we will know where ridership trends go for the winter. You know, normally you see a spike of ridership ship in October. It goes down over the winter, so we're going to be comparing how much it goes down by this year to previous years to see how that lines up. Um, ridership went up in November this year, which is atypical, but if you guys remember the graph I showed you last month, ridership has been all over the place. So we're trying to be kind of tentative and just kick the can as much as we need to. Um, I'm not going to guarantee we won't delay it again if we see ridership spiking, but um I I'm hoping that uh things start to stabilize a little bit, and we can consider adding the service. But we have to be careful that we don't get ourselves in a bind with not having enough drivers for Dial-A-Ride.
Right. Thank you.
That's a good question. Any any other uh questions, comments, concerns?
Right.
Thank you, Ben. Um, Gary, was there anything to update on the special projects committee?
Uh, no, we've not met since the last board meeting.
Thank you. Uh, we moved executive session, so we're past that. Is there any old business in the room? Is there any new business in the room?
Uh, yes, I have a.
Sure. Gary, you might want to turn it on. I think you turned it off by accident.
Sorry, thank you. Complicated. Uh, you've had a couple conversations with some folks about uh, the possibility of perhaps taking this the the concept of the special projects committee, focusing obviously as it presently is on the building. But taking that as a concept and going back to the way the board used to function with subcommittees. And uh, uh, I think the floor sweeper, uh scrubber, uh, your new hot rod uh, is, I think, a perfect example of my point, and and that is that we, as a board, perhaps get too far into the weeds on some of these things, and that a lot of this heavy lifting of of these of these other issues could be done in a committee uh and save some board time so that we can focus on perhaps some higher level objectives. So, um, I'd like to um have some consideration made to perhaps establishing a couple of other committees, a finance committee perhaps, an operations subcommittee, something like that, where those committees can spend more time with management and learn more in depth of what management is is looking at. Uh, and and bring that knowledge to the full board. Uh, in particular, uh, I think the the finances uh are probably difficult for some of us to keep up with when when we only see it once a month, and and perhaps a committee would be more capable of of spending in-depth time on that with management. And then th- the issues would bubble up to the full board. Every uh board that I've been involved in has always had subcommittees where the where the hard work is done. And the and the final, and and that committee brings a recommendation to the full board, rather than having the full board dive into everything. Um, while we didn't spend a lot of time on on the new uh scrubber, it's just one of the things that it seems to me could pass more quickly if it was spent, if time was spent in a in a committee. Now, that would put, and I recognize this, um, that would put more pressure on the board members each to uh volunteer to spend a little bit more time, but I think we as a board would be a better functioning board if we considered a a subcommittee kind of structure. So I'll throw that out for some consideration. Want to stop there? You want number two?
Well, we can talk about the committees. Does anyone have thoughts on having subcommittees of the board, just for a brief discussion now, and um I think there'll be some follow-up discussions after that?
I think it's, I I mean, I think it's a great idea. Actually, when I joined the board, I would, I wanted my comments to sometimes I forget who, somebody was, I was surprised that there wasn't committees, so. Um, but actually, um, my only, my my most specific question is without like determining like the uh logistics, like who, what, how, like, do you have to be on a committee? How many on each committee? Like, who determines all those?
You have to be on every one of them.
Nobody wants me.
Yeah, I I believe in Brandon. You can quote me if I'm misstating. I believe a committee can have no more than four people on it, and they do have to be public meetings.
Yeah, correct. Depending upon the the number of them, and otherwise they do have to be public meetings, just like the building committee existed.
Right. In in my view, um, beyond the legal structure, the committee itself would determine its schedule and and and, you know, I would hope that we would all be willing to volunteer to at least sit on one of the committees and be active on that committee. I mean, I think that's sort of what we sign up for when we sign up to be a member of a board like this, that that we're gonna we're going to do some lifting.
Okay. I think that's very worthy to for us to consider, and um I will talk to the other members of the board to get the temperature and then discuss with Brandon if there is an interest, how logistically that gets implemented.
Okay, and I'll throw out just one other suggestion, if 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 you'd like to go that way, and that may be uh, the special projects committee might put a recommendation together of how a plan would go. Um, I'm I'm volunteering the special projects committee as the chair. I'm volunteering.
I like that volunteer. I like the spirit of volunteer. Since we're in the season of giving, I take you up on that offer.
Well, I could get voted down by my other members here, but uh it's just a way to get maybe some wheels turning.
I think that sounds great. And could you have one? Was there a number two?
Yeah, number two. Um, I think Mr. Massey's public comments um rang pretty clearly with me. I I and I thi- I think in conversations with other board members, I I don't think that this is a unique position, but I think we're all a little uncomfortable with um, A, you know, the the concern about some service fallout. Obviously, we, you know, we're all a little concerned about that. I think we're perhaps on the road to getting that back on track, but um uh, even the bigger issue to me is we're sitting on a lot of money. And as Mr. Massey pointed out, so are several of the other government entities. That's taxpayer money. Um, I find it very uncomfortable that we're sitting, holding taxpayer money in in the amount that we're holding. On a personal level, I just find that sort of wrong. And and um, I I think that what I'd like to talk about here is to um Mr. Massey requested a uh that we we take a look at at uh eliminating the quarter percent tax. Uh, that may be pretty extreme, I don't know, but I do think that maybe that's something we ought to take a legal look at. And so I'd like to see if if uh we might charge legal counsel with taking a look at the tax and how do you undo that tax if that's what the board chose to do, or can you do a moratorium, or are are there other options that we can pursue? Uh, we're an awful lot of money, and um uh, maybe we ought to take a look at how do we relieve some of the burden on on the taxpayers. So I guess I'd like to throw that out and see if we can charge our legal counsel to take a look at those mechanics, the legal mechanics of that. I don't know if I said that clearly or not. Should I rephrase it?
No, I mean, Brandon, did you understand everything? I I mean, I think it's perfectly appropriate for Brandon to look into a board member's request, absolutely.
I'm not saying that that's what we're going to do, but I think, given Mr. Massey's request, I think it's probably incumbent upon us to see what the opportunity might be. Or or not the opportunity, but the mechanics of, should we choose to go down that path? How would we do that? I I, can we do that?
I think that's appropriate for Mr. Dines to look into. Um, would this be a meeting update at the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and were there any thoughts or comments in the room initially from anyone else?
That'd probably be a good one, refer to committee, Gary.
That's a new.
Okay, any other new business in the room?
Yes. Uh, along the lines of our legal counsel, I think that uh since we've uh, I've been on the board here five years now roughly, and we still don't have a current uh uh rules and regulations. The one we have, I think, is nineteen ninety-eight or something like that. It's it's old. So I'd put like to put a proposal on the on the floor to have our legal counsel rewrite the rules and regulations using the current laws that apply to uh agencies such as Lake Tran, and I'd like to see that done with just the legal counsel rather than anybody else on the board.
So my understanding of what you're saying is you would like to make a motion for Mr. Dines to rewrite the rules and regulations of Lake Tran um with the current laws uh under what he believes would be the proper legal guidance.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, and now I would like to open the floor for discussion.
Uh I love the idea of looking at the bylaws and determining um, you know, what changes need to be made, what updates need to be made. But I do not think our legal counsel should do that unilaterally. I think that should be uh a job for the board, possibly a committee to to look at those bylaws and come up with um possible uh changes to that. I'm not, I'm not sure. I like the idea of legal counsel doing that without board input.
I guess I didn't finish what I was gonna say. I'd like him to do it before it's presented to the board. And then the board can review it and determine if that's what they want.
I I still think that it's more appropriate for board members to have the first crack at it. That's my opinion.
I don't think that makes any difference if they're gonna get the rewritten rules. They're gonna have a crack at it. It's not a just for clarification. So you want, you you're suggesting a committee run through that and then have then have the legal uh uh review. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that makes more sense. I I I just think that I I'm not sure Brandon is in a position to make those changes or to propose those changes without board input. I just think that they should come from the board. Obviously, Brandon would need to be involved in the process and it'd be, you know, ensure that we're we're not changing something we can't change. Um or making a change that we're we're not allowed to make. Um but um but yeah, I think that it it would make more sense for the board to look at them and to and to propose changes first. That's, I I just think that's more practical. That's all.
Is it?
I don't.
I have a question. Is it um just a matter of bringing the laws, bringing the rules and regulations up to current? So it's just a matter of researching what the current law is? Or are you proposing to make actual changes to like adding in new things and taking things out? Or are you just proposing like a mere updating to say, okay, now it's, you know, now this is the law as of two thousand twenty-two? Does that make, does my question make sense?
I think. I'm not sure what you said, frankly.
I I guess I'm looking at it as two different things. If you're looking at merely updating what is already there, like just inserting the new, if if any laws have, if any, if any laws have changed locations or um or are you looking at also adding in new things or taking things out?
Well, the ones we have right now are obsolete. We don't follow them. So I think they should be corrected with the current laws and the and the current uh well, any changes that have happened in the last twenty years. I'm not looking to make any drastic changes.
Okay.
I just want it, I just want it fixed.
Got it.
It's uh it's it's recent. And and it's something we can look at and follow.
Got it.
That's all I want to get done.
Lane, I'll just make the comment here that um I had, I had done that before, you know, as a issue on my own. I had taken those rules and regulations. I talked with Ben quite a bit about how they should be rewritten. And I have have some drafts of that, the way it was rewritten. You had a chance to uh take a look at those and didn't really have any too much comment to it. Brian and um Brandon were also involved in some discussions that we had with it. But then it was decided that we were just gonna table it for a little while as we were going through the the headquarters building expansion. So uh those those changes or suggested changes are available. I just was waiting for a time to see, ask the board is how they wanted to go about making a presentation on that. If you just want to have the changes given to you, or if you want to have a verbal presentation made at one of the board meetings. So this is a good time to, I guess, to ask that question or go through with the motion.
Well, I don't care how it gets done. I just want it get done.
I do too.
Well, then let's move ahead.
It's the board's pleasure here then. I, again, I can, I have um word documents with track changes in it and uh lay out a lot of the different suggestions on how they should be changed. I could share that with everybody or uh find some other means and methods of way of of sharing it with people. Or again, they come in next month and make a a smaller presentation on it.
I would like to see these before voting on this personally. I would like to a chance to look at the the bylaws and look at the proposed changes to the bylaws. And then maybe at the next meeting, we we vote on whether to make those changes or not. I think that makes sense for me. I haven't seen them yet.
Uh Mr. Dines?
Yeah, i- if I recall, and Mr. Zibble, you can correct me, we had talked about at some point in time a lo- a while ago, having a workshop session to go over that. Um that we had had and and I somehow I think it just got lost as we tried to figure that out. And that's neither here nor there, but but Mr. Zibble's correct. There are some drafts out there. There were some changes. Uh I know the board probably has a lot of different opinions on that. And and I don't, I'm not suggesting we have lots more meetings, but to the extent that that might be helpful. A workshop uh re- reviewing those to, you know, might be of of the board's pleasure too. Just a thought.
Um Laura, I guess I'm a little bit in your camp on this. I'd I'd love to see those.
I'm I'm totally, I would like to have that work session where we go over the bylaws and the changes and maybe before the next meeting, and then we can vote on whether we want to make the changes at the next meeting.
I don't think we have to be that quick, but uh and maybe I can share, share them with you, then we can talk about it at the next meeting and then see if we want to go through with the workshop or however you want to proceed from there.
Should we uh vote to table this, Brandon?
Whatever you please. I I I don't know. Mr. Sheets made a motion. I I know he suggested, was there a motion made?
Yeah, it was motion made and seconded.
I'm sorry, correct. You can certainly table it if the board pleases.
So would the board prefer to table this motion or would the board prefer to vote on this motion? I'm welcome any discussion on that. Okay, let's have, is there a motion to table this?
A motion to table.
Motion made by Mr. Pishmo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zibble. Trudy, can you please call the roll?
Epic.
Yes.
Noneley.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
No.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, then we have tabled this until um the future. And at this time, I believe, Mr. Zibble, were you going to send out drafts?
Uh yes, I can, I will, I will do that.
Okay.
I can also, if you want to give it to me, I can also put it in Govenda for everybody to, that is useful, however you need.
Yeah, I'll probably have to get with you anyway for everybody's addresses.
Okay, at this time, is there any other new business in the room today? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn today's Board of Trustees meeting? Motion made by Miss Noneley. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Sheets. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Dunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at six oh three. I hope everyone has happy holidays and a happy new year.